Alright, so we'll start with our council activity reports. Before I get too far into mine, I just want to note the last Friday was Veterans Day on the 11th. So I take a second to honor those who are in this room and those who've served in the council in our community before, in service of our country. The fact that we get to have free elections like we had last week and get to speak our minds and things like that are there because people who have more bravery and courage than I do have done things that I couldn't. So to them, I am eternally grateful and I trust that I speak on them as I have ever been here on the council when I say that. Also, we are getting into January of next year. If anybody wants a committee change or something like that, let me know. We can send out a formal list of the committees before then, but just if we've got a change or something that you want, shoot me an email so that I can consider it. Otherwise, we had the budget and finance meeting. We went over the liquor store budget along with the water and sewer budgets for next year. Our water and sewer accounts are in pretty good shape. We're looking at a small bump in our water fees is the recommendation and then staying the same on our sewer rates. So that should be good for the homeowners. We were worried with the cost of inflation and how that would look, but those accounts are both very healthy. Liquor store Bill's working on some things over there. We've made some steps in the right direction, some changes he made in this last year, but then hopefully get him an assistant manager to help increase some profits a little bit more. We had our election last Tuesday and we'll talk about that some more when we certify the results later on here. And then Neil, Tarek, and I had a policies and procedures meeting over at the Public Workshop, met with the Public Works employees, talked a little bit about the status of the wage study that was done previously and how we might potentially redo that and bring us up to snuff with some of our nearby neighbors. So with that, that's all I have.
Well, you got a little more. We had a call in the library.
Oh, you're right. We did have a call in the library last week, met with Pat Hanson and a number of folks from the library talking about being a choice of an architect and things like that. The friends of the library are going to move forward with hiring someone to come in and get us some initial design sketches. But Neil?
Yeah, well, we had the policy and public works meeting last week. You know, then other than that, I didn't have much activity. Want to thank everybody for being reelected. Paul, Elin got sixty-two more votes than me. It really hurt my feelings. Probably because he's younger and better looking. Doesn't take much.
Oh.
Megga?
Oh, I got more the time. Mostly we've been working on the upcoming tree lighting to kick off the holidays and it's going to take place on the 26th to coincide with Small Business Saturday. So we're having a meeting, the chamber was tonight, and we were going to discuss later on and possibly a little bit tomorrow about how we're best going to go about that. Other than that, it's been kind of a quiet couple of weeks.
Alright.
Other than going to the chamber last month, I haven't had anything since.
Tomorrow is your busy day though.
Me too.
I don't have anything to report.
Alright, so on to our department head with boards. Bill?
So year-to-date, sales still remain strong. I'm glad to say that we're ahead of last year by eleven thousand, but coming out of COVID, I'll take that any day because it's been a tough year for a lot of stores, but we're hanging in there really good. Margins, we constantly have to watch. We just, October, received our second beer increase for the year and it wasn't just fifty cents a case or a buck a case, something went up substantially. So every invoice that comes in, we have to monitor very closely to make sure we're not selling and losing money. And it's amazing, every shipment that comes in, what has increased. It sounds like we haven't seen the end of it yet. So we continue to stay on top of the margins and they're above last year right now, so we hope to continue that trend. So you talked about the assistant manager's position. It's still the planning stages. We've got some numbers back. We need to have some meetings. Tarek and I do, HR and I need to sit down and talk about how we can work it into next year's budget. My goal is to get through the end of the year, first part of the year, have some solid numbers come back and talk about how we can make it work into our budget so we can get rolling on this. So that's kind of my plans right now. We are in audit season, so we've already started doing counts. We'll be doing counts through the end of the year. Audrey will come in on New Year's Day and check our numbers like he does every year. So we are working on that. Thanksgiving weekend will be a huge weekend for us to catch up on that a little bit. Wine Club has been moved to Tuesday nights, so we'll be doing the third Tuesday is the scheduled nights. So we have Breakthrough coming tomorrow night at the American Legion at seven o'clock and looks like we're going to have a good turnout by the number of people that have purchased tickets, so things are going well. I'll have more hard numbers for you in the packet for the meeting on the 30th. I'll have a very detailed packet for you with our numbers where we are year-to-date. So I think Jennifer needs those by the end of the week, so I'll have those done.
Alright.
So that's all I have. Unless anybody has any questions.
Anything for Bill? Alright, Tarek.
Alright, well, the big thing that we've been working on, of course, was the election and we had early voting here the week prior, so that were the, we handled that well. Policies and procedures, as you mentioned, we also had a call in the library, so I think that's progressing. And budget and finance, that's all I have.
Questions for Tarek? How did the early voting go? Megan asked, Chris did too, but...
We had fifty-seven and it's only open to City of Paintsville residents.
And then you think you said eight-hundred-and-fifty-seven?
Eight ninety-two total voters on Election Day.
Awesome. Okay. Anything for Tarek? Right. So with that, we'll move into our open forum period. If there's anyone here who wants to talk to us on an issue currently on our agenda or something that's not on the agenda, you may do so at this time. This is the only chance that we'll have during our meeting tonight to talk about anything not on the agenda. We have up to ten minutes for the public forum and we'll evenly divide that time between anyone wishing to speak. We're not going to take any action on anything raised, but we may have questions regarding statements you make or may otherwise respond, but we won't take a vote on anything. Anything raised during the forum might be referred to city staff or to an appropriate committee for further evaluation. With that, is there anybody here for the public forum?
Yeah, I'll start.
Yeah, if you wouldn't mind us going to the podium? Do we have a microphone?
I'll follow.
I think that one works.
Oh, is it up top?
Yep.
Okay. I'm not a public speaker, so forgive me for how this sounds. I think we know why we're here. We have the situation with eight ball. Okay, I want to start off with, what, ten minutes total rate? Correct? Okay. I guess what I want to start off with is that eight ball in our yard is not as considered junk as people would say, right? We've had to have it removed. I'm going to, I guess when we start with art, the expression or application of human creative skill and imagination typically in visual forms such as painting or sculpture, producing works to be appreciated primarily for their beauty or emotional power. Okay? Who is able to define art, especially nowadays in the generation we live in? Okay? All art is objective because it relies upon the opinions of viewers. That said, whether art is good or bad, isn't just about subjective views. Popular opinion can be swayed by the fame of the artist, the amount of exposure a piece of art has and the impact of societal norms this time. So I think we've been targeted in this since I feel that we had to get eight ball, what you consider accumulation, right? Accumulation means one, an accruing of. I think I've had this argument with somebody else on the board here. We don't have a growing of because what's going against what I was threatened cited as, our vehicles in our yard ran. Our vehicles were registered, our vehicles were fine. I think the problem is that, I guess, excuse me, I'm not a public speaker, that when I first moved in this town, I got on the Paintsville Fire Department. When I got on that department, I met a man who was previously on this department. I picked that man up and I brought him to a fish fry. As we drove up to the department, and I ate my words, he asked me, "What do you think of this building?" And I said, "It's old and needs a little bit of work." He told me that he built that building. He built it with his hands. I later found out that this man paved roads or created roads. He was part of the Hartman Ice. This car that sits in front of our yard is more than just junk. It's not just a car. It has meaning. It has value, whether it's financial value or just in our hearts. What has taken place over the last few weeks has not only divided this town, but it destroyed Ursula, Chelsea, I mean, it's destroyed her. And maybe this wasn't the intent, maybe you're going by the ordinance, but I think the ordinance needs to be reevaluated, needs to be updated in the sense that we live in a new generation. Again, art, what people consider art is vague, is different. When this ordinance was created, wagon wheels weren't considered art. Instead, wagon wheels were farm implements, which I've been arguing is not the case, but it is. If you Google it, it's farm implement, which goes against ordinance, but everybody can have them. An accumulation of two or more, right? Well, every yard has the accumulation of wagon wheels, but why is that considered art? That's for instance, we put them in our front yards, we make gardens out of them. Back when this ordinance was created, that wasn't art, but now it is. So I want to argue in the sense, what is art? And we're not placing them in our yard just here and there randomly, multiple snow blowers, multiple vehicles that just take up space. We put them out, we clean them up, we take care of them.
Our kids help us with it.
We...
Why are you crying, Mom?
This isn't just a car. This is a representation of this town. Who built this town? This means more to us than just junk. It's not just decorating. Yes, we decorate our yard and the thing is, people love it. We have people come from Wilmer, say Plow, people, we've been told busloads come just to see our decorations, which sure, the car is not part of our Christmas decoration, but is a part of our yard in general. So what has happened, I think, I would strongly suggest and like to try to see if we could come up with looking into the ordinance, trying to make a change, because we need to update the ordinance to today, not back when it was created. There's a lot of loops, there's a lot of gaps in it. And nowadays, again, we have a lot of equipment that people stick in their yards, which people don't have to move, but we do. So I guess that's all I got to say for now, for that, so.
While you two switch, I'll just ask, did you get the letter that I put in the mail over the weekend?
No.
Okay, then it's probably going to hit your box like tomorrow or Wednesday. I know from talking with Tarek and with the chief, that both of you have been talking with council member Thielin about the ordinance and things like that. I've asked Paul to basically set up an impromptu task force on looking at some amended language to that ordinance. So the letter that's coming to you is just an invitation to participate with him.
Absolutely.
So that you can look at and anybody else who wants to look at that can come up with some amended language and then he can bring it back and work through the bureaucratic process of formally amending it.
Okay.
So that'll be coming, if you see it, City of Paintsville, it's that, it's a handwritten envelope.
Okay.
Alright, thanks Zach. Chelsea?
Hi, thank you for letting me be here tonight. I just want to say that actually tonight marks three years since Jim Hartman has passed. So I'd like to bow our heads for just a couple of seconds because here I am fighting this fight and it truly has been, we're wearing his, we're his pick crew tonight. We're here to fight for the legacy of Jim Hartman that we've had. Yes, the boys, we wanted to at his funeral three years ago, so he had passed. I also want to start off by saying, I want you to hear his voice. Grandpa, what's this?
I don't see her.
He knew her. There she is. That was our last ride together and this is where I want to go with that. Okay, the car sat down by the river of my dad's because that was Jim Hartman's home a long time ago. He built the home with his own tuned hands. My dad lives there and recites there today. The car, after the racing career, you know, went down into the woods. Many generations played down there in that car and many memories, many races that you sit, it's like you sit back there and you win a race, you know, it was so much fun as a kid. He came down with Alzheimer's. Marge Hartman, his wife, asked my dad to then take the car and bring it out to the farm. Okay, and my new, Marge is not one to have these things in her yard to hurt, she keeps her yard up the way, you know, so for her to do that honestly was honorable itself. She knew that her husband, his mind needed that. So my dad voted eight ball up from down in the weeds by the river and away eight ball went on a race down the road to raise my grandpa's mind even if he and on repeat. Okay? He would sit in his chair, he would look out at the old girl and there she is. Okay? So my grandma did the best she could with him at home. He fell, you know, she did everything she could, but his last fall was it. They told her, he cannot come back home. My new, a piece of him was leaving day by day, week by week, ten years of this. Alzheimer's is the longest, slowest goodbye. If anyone here has had to deal with it, you'll know it, okay? So you do anything for these people to just have their memory be exercised and something in their mind be there that they love and they remember. So after he was then decided to go into the manor, it was then decided, I called my grandma and I said, "What do you think about eight ball coming to our yard?" So I can pick up grandpa, we can go on rides and he can see his old girl in our yard. So it was then decided, we had Paintsville Auto actually go out, pick up eight ball very generously, kindly, and place her in our yard. Actually have pictures of these little guys here pretending to mow the grass and give her a beautiful place to sit down by our maple tree. And so yes, I would take grandpa on rides and that was his memory. He raised in his memory. Every time we came around that corner, there she is. So that is why eight ball went to our yard. It wasn't to accumulate, it wasn't to cause a stir, to cause hatred, to cause any kind of go against the ordinance the way that you guys or whoever has come up with this. Treat us criminally, send us letters stating that he's going to get a misdemeanor fine. I just want you to understand how many fights we've had between each other, me saying he should take the fine, we fight it, he's saying, "I'm not going to take a fine." Later on, finding out why they're saying it's petty, I'm just going to go into that. It's nothing more than a misdemeanor. Well, who wants to fight that in state court? Why did eight ball make this be that? That's just my question. Why? Why, when in the end it was all for joy and for an old man of, like he said, built this town, fire department twenty-seven years, graded our road, harvested ice off of like Coronas, built houses, mason and man, I mean, a man who, like he said, and my new, when he would pick up grandpa, grandpa was losing his mind then too. So he went to pick him up and he really loved Zach for that, but later on, he forgot that too. So I'm just, that's my, I'm here just to basically state the positives tonight of what we felt we were bringing to this town. The elderly people that drive by, I don't think about tours, but the manor before COVID, even Marge herself would drive by in those tours and see and be so happy to see what we do. And yes, people bring up the eight ball. I have over, almost eight hundred signatures on a petition right now that you can't deny. These people have signed their name. They're not anonymous. They've signed their name, they've donated money to the cause to help us get eight ball back in our yard. So, and with that being said, I do believe there needs to be change, things like looking at society for what it is now and okay, yes, eight ball is art now because back in the day, that was an old race car, you know, back then, they worked very hard, but now look at these little generations. You want to know, our neighbor's daughter cried to her mom and said, "I came home from school, Mom, and that eight ball car is gone." If they don't leave Jim's story, you know, like it's opening up the minds of these little kids to say, "Hey, you have a dream, you go for it. You want to be a race car driver, be a race car driver. You want to build a house, build a house," you know? I feel like pulling it out of our yard only closed the minds of these guys and other people that actually respected our car, respected Jim Hartman. So with that, I'm just going to actually suggest, I saw you earlier Neil, you were driving by our house. I welcome you to drive by tonight and actually look at the projector. We have Jim Hartman up because you will want to take eight ball out of our yard. If I have to put him on the screen, I'll put him on the screen. It's not leaving, so I will do whatever I gotta do because he's not leaving. He won't go away. That's all I have.
Thank you, Chelsea.
He shouldn't have to go away.
Can I say a few things during that?
We're a little bit over, but I'll give you just a couple of minutes.
Okay. I'm sorry, Derek.
I'm sorry. I didn't come here for Chelsea and you guys know that we're on the agenda, but, and I'm sure she doesn't, isn't even aware of this, and when I see these eight ball shirts, I have to tell you this story. We have pictures, my sister and I, we wore eight ball shirts because my dad, Hubert Schwant, was the mechanic for Jim Hartman's eight ball car. I was out at that racetrack when I was, well, I'm sixty-nine years old, so I was like six years old and our family knew the Hartman family very well. I don't know what the plan is, I know she'd like to keep it in her yard. The only comment I'd like to make is, and I had said this to Joe one night, maybe it would be better to put it somewhere where everyone in town could enjoy it. Maybe it would be nice to put it over in the gazebo park because we have a lot of activities that go on over there. Why not put a slab of concrete there and put the car on there because it is part of Paintsville? So, and I know that because I grew up with that, so that's all I want to say.
Thanks, Derek.
Thank you.
Alright, I'm just going to make a couple of remarks. It's been all over social media, a lot of divisiveness. I don't want to add to any of the division. Suffice to say, there are two sides to every story from what I've observed on this end. There's been a lot of conversation over the years between the police department and then, you know, talking about not just eight ball, but the other vehicles in the yard as well. Where this came from, I get that it feels targeted and I'm not trying to say that your feelings are wrong because that's certainly how it must feel on a personal level. But this was raised at an issue earlier this year, even last year, by the council and to the directive to the police chief saying, "Go around the town and take a look at all of these properties that are in violation of our nuisance ordinance. Not any specific one, but take a look at all of them and let's start doing something about it." And he's talked to a number of property owners, he's issued some citations, most have started cleaning things up. Nuisance properties have been the conversation of many, many, many meetings of the Police and Fire Oversight Committee. And at the last meeting, I wasn't able to make it there, but Tarek, he told me that, you know, the input, the comments to the chief were, "Go out there and get these properties cleaned up. We have a nuisance ordinance in place for a reason, we have to enforce it." And it's not just one property. I get that it feels that way because you can't see everything else that's happening. We can't tell you how many other homeowners have been written citations or anything like that, but I'm asking you to take my word that there have been other properties addressed as well with this. I will also say there was a comment made that I told the chief to just go out there and get rid of the stuff. I didn't, I have no memory of that at least. I don't have the authority to tell the police chief to do anything and even if I did, I don't want that authority. I don't, I don't want to tell him when to issue citations. I don't want that. But this was a directive given to our police department and as a council, we have to stand by and support our officers as they enforce the ordinances that we pass. So our ordinance is passed the way that it is. I certainly invite you to work with Paul and invite anybody else, those who think all signs of you, work on finding some sort of an amendment and we can revise this and bring it into the 21st century and we can work with an ordinance that's revised from there. So that's all I have.
I appreciate that.
Alright, thanks everyone. With that, we'll close out our public forum, we'll move on to our consent agenda. That includes the minutes listed on page one, the vouchers on page two, and it was a three-week period including a bond payment, so it's a little bit higher, seven hundred sixty-four thousand, two hundred and sixty-eight dollars, eighteen cents, along with the training seminar on page three. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I still don't know.
I have a motion by Hersberg, is there a second?
A second.
I heard it from Gene first, thank you though, Megan. Seconding by Gene, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
I oppose? None?
I oppose.
Alright, you? Alright. Derek, if you want to step back up the podium, we'll start with Joe and Irene Miller. I don't know, Paul, if you want to step up? I will, while the two of you get up there, I will say, "I read the letter, I read through everything that you've sent us. I have to admit, I didn't call you back. I was hoping to just run into you at church some morning and I didn't see you." So I apologize for dropping the call on that. I know, it's yesterday.
You what? I said, "I saw her."
Yes, I was there yesterday, but by that point, we were already here, so, no. So if you just want to go ahead and tell us a little bit, I've read everything, I think everybody else has.
Well, everybody got a copy of the letter.
Yeah.
So you know what we're here to bitch about, whatever. Excuse my language, but, yeah, this turned into quite a fiasco for him and I because I, you know, we understand, you know, the safeguard belongs to, you know, the city or whoever, I don't know. We don't care if they come and do stuff. I'm real curious, this has been almost, it'll be three years in March since this started and I don't know if Vibrant is even up and running in Paintsville.
Some areas it is.
Okay.
We have Vibrant here.
Oh, okay. I think over there, there's only the two, I don't even know what they're called, obstacles in our, obstacles in our yard really, I don't know. But I don't think they've gone any further over there, so, but yeah, our total cost for this was two thousand, seventy-five dollars and twenty-four cents. I'm not sure why we have to pay that. We've paid it all and I don't know why we are responsible for it. Does anybody know why we're responsible for it?
Well, the, Ron was not here, Public Works Director, but he kind of filled me in on the background of how it started. And my knowledge began when Vibrant came out there and dug up the right of way on your property to put in their fiber or put in whatever it is they put in. And then they did not put it back properly. So of course then you notify, you spoke with the Public Works Director and then he contacted, I think it was Boss, to come and redo, redo the lawn and plant or put the grass seed on. And he actually reached out to Vibrant as well because there was, I think, a similar cost to what you paid with Hersberg Landscaping, right? I think it was a similar amount, around fifteen hundred dollars and then the city got to, or approached the Vibrant co-op and got them to split the cost with us. So they actually stepped up and said, "Okay, we'll help cover the cost for this." After that, you know, I, for whatever reason, it didn't take, you know, I think, one would say, "Well, it could have not been watered properly or there were too many weeds or something was going on there." And that's when, again, you approached us. And I think during that time, there was also a water credit given during the summer months to help, you know, cover the cost of watering or the extra watering that was required. And then since then, that's when, you know, you took the photos of the weeds and how it didn't take well. And then of course, you went out and got another landscaper to do it.
Right, well, some of your, I, everything's written out here exactly the way it happened. These dates are real. I kept track on the post-it notes for two years of this crap. And Ron Hurdin said on the 23rd of July that Maker was going to reimburse the city after Boss did the work. That's where that conversation came in. But when Boss did the work, they came on, they had to wait from July 23rd of 2020, they waited until May 5th of 21 because it snowed in October. They were, they, we had talked to Boss, they were going to come, we know them, "Yeah, we'll come late in the year and then we'll do it so that you don't have to be watering it for the next two months," you know, like July, August, September. Well, then it snowed early and he couldn't come. Bob Brown is the one that Joe talked to about it. So they couldn't come. "We're fine with that, we don't want to, we don't want this to not turn out, so yeah, we'll wait, it's fine to do that." Well, then, we started watering in May of 2021, so that's the second year, we're the second So that's the second year, we're the second year already, and we watered, and I watered for two solid months, from May sixth until July first, and we stopped watering, because it was nothing but thistles. And you can see by the pictures.
Yeah, solid.
And that's, isn't that a toxic weed or something, that we're not even supposed to, we're supposed to get rid of those in our yard? We lived there for almost fifty years, we've never had thistles in our yard. We might get one here and there once in a while, and Joe digs them out, because we don't want that. So we stopped watering it, because I'm not gonna water thistles, I'm paying for the water, so I'm not gonna, and even if I'm being reimbursed, somebody's paying for the water, so it's kind of a waste. So we stopped. And then we contacted Hertzberg in the fall of twenty-twenty-one, and then, of course, that was, I think that was our hot year. It, it got so hot.
Yeah.
And we talked about it in September, and I told them, "We've gotta do something with this, we can't go, we aren't gonna wait until twenty-twenty-two in the spring and then have to go through the whole summer of watering as well," which is what we ended up doing anyway. So Mr. Hertzberg came, and he killed the weeds, and he came back, like he said he would, in the spread of twenty-two, and he did the project. But he, he, we paid him. Ron had no agreement with him at all. Ron was talking to Meeker Co-op about taking responsibility for this, and they refused. They told us we should sue them, because they had attorneys that could handle us. Well, why?
Meeker said that to you?
Yeah. They told my husband that.
Yep, on the phone.
Why should we have to do that?
We have lawyers on staff.
I mean, that, is that something I'm really supposed to be responsible for? You know?
We look out the window, and they're vacuuming up on our lawn with a traction machine.
And it's raining. Both sides of my home, it's raining, and they're out there working on my lawn. Never came to the door and asked us, never came and informed us of anything. And that's when we called Ron, and he came over, and he said, "Well, they're, they can't do that, they're not allowed." Well, they didn't seem, they didn't seem to care, but he talked to them, "Well, they were gonna fix this, this was gonna be right." Well, it's not, because we got stuck paying almost twenty-one hundred dollars for this mess. And I mean, I don't know, was I, were we supposed to find somebody cheaper? Well, the other guy that we talked to, he would've been about the same price. And we went to someone we knew who was very reliable, and I'm sure a lot of you know this man, well, you know him, and he does good work, and it got done. And we religiously watered like he told us to. Yes, it's expensive. My last, our last water bill was over three hundred, or our last water and sewer bill was over three hundred dollars. How many people in Painsville pay that for water in a month? I figured it out. We paid not over nine hundred dollars, nine hundred and four dollars for water, from July first of twenty-twenty until now, until twenty-twenty-two, and that was just water. And then I averaged out the six months during that whole timeframe where we, where we didn't have any extra water on our bill, and our average bill for water is fifty-one dollars and seventy-seven cents. I mean, I don't know what the average is in town, but our, our bill usually runs with water and sewer, it's been a little over a hundred, a hundred and twenty maybe, you know? And I did, I wanna clarify something. I did misspeak in here when I said our average bill, because I didn't take into consideration on the bill that the sewer and the lights are on that, so I, I wanna correct that, because I wrote right in here, our average was a hundred and twenty for three months for the last two years, that's incorrect. So I just want you to be aware of that.
Incidental little thing, when it grew up to nothing but weeds, I have no idea why. But Ron was shocked when he figured out that we put twenty thousand gallons of water on it and never grew. But it wasn't like we didn't do our...
Well, and someone told me that when, when you disturb grass areas, thistles can dominate. They can come in and they'll dominate the area. I didn't know that, I never, well, we've never, we aren't people that, we have a golf course lawn like some people. We would, we mow, we, we've sprayed for dandelions, I don't know, years ago. I think we've kind of eliminated them, because if you do it enough times, your property doesn't end up having a lot, and so our grass is just normal grass, you know? We aren't people that have our lawn this high, and you have to call someone to come and mow our lawn and put it on our tax bill. We, we've lived there for almost fifty years. We know how to take care of a property, and we always have. And I'll tell ya, it's irritating to know that these people can come into Painsville and do what they want. They, they, it's, it's insane to me, that they just pull the lawn and wreck it, and I, now with all the social media crap, I wish now I would've videotaped them every time they came. I, I would've, I should've videotaped when they were out there pretending to lay seed on my grass, because I could've counted the seeds that they laid, and, and the dirt they laid down was, they brought up a five-gallon pails of dirt out of a truck. I don't even know if it was black, to be honest with you, because I was working, I, I worked from home, and I don't have time to stand and looking out the window all the time, but I wish now we would've taped everything, because then we would have better proof, I guess. But, I mean, I, I don't know. We need some reimbursement here, and I don't know what you guys are willing to do, but, and I, you know, I don't know if you wanna talk about this and have us come again, or whatever, but this is not right in any form, and I don't think any of you here would want this stuck on your liability in your home, on your property either. It's, it's not right.
So, Doreen, I will say, I, I agree, I would be livid and through the roof if they did this to my property. You're not the only one with a three hundred dollar water bill, but I have two kids who take baths, and then I water my lawn a little more than I should, maybe. But, no, I would be, I would, I would be through the roof. And I'm sorry that this happened. Yeah, I get why you're upset. I worry from a city perspective of, and Bill, I'll ask you to chime in on this maybe when I'm done, but if we can help any more than we have, my understanding is that the city and Vibrant shared the cost of the Voss bill when that was done. I mean, as inhuman and unfeeling as it might sound, I, I think I'm inclined to say you have to sue Vibrant and take them to small claims. And I, I know that's not the answer you wanna hear, but I...
The one thing, I, I don't know if anybody has talked to Voss, I mean, it's frustrating to me that the city paid a bill.
Yeah.
To somebody to do this. I mean, you know, I think the people at Voss are usually fairly reasonable, but I don't know if it's been communicated to them that the lawn they planted came up as all thistles. I mean, you know, the pictures look pretty bad to me, I don't, I don't know, I just don't know, you know, that, that would, to me, should've been the first step, and maybe it was taken, and I don't know, maybe he calls or made a lawsuit, and they're not responsible, I don't know.
We didn't. After, we, we dealt with Ron Mergan through almost all of this. Ron was our, our basic contact person.
And Ron's, you know, Ron's not here, so I don't know what Ron did or didn't do, I guess, but, I mean, that's the frustration. When I just read this, I, I tried to call Ron, 'cause I was like, this seems weird to me, that, that Voss would do a job and have it be this bad, and then not do anything above it.
Not that I would do it.
Yeah.
I was just calling you, you didn't water it.
Yeah, he told us we didn't water it, but we had proof that we did, because our water bill that, that month, well, Ron told us we put twenty thousand gallons of water on the lawn, so, and we didn't do the whole lawn, this is doing the Boulevard, and then the two side, the two, on the north and south part of the house. We couldn't afford to do our whole lawn, we can't afford to water our whole lawn, it's too big. You know, this is, I mean, believe me, we're not watering people, but we followed his instructions to the letter, because we don't want him to have to come back, we want this stuff to grow. It's, it would be ridiculous to waste that money, we don't do that. And that's why when Mr. Hertzberg said, he set us up with, he brought in extra holes, he borrowed us a timer, so it could be timed watering, I mean, I, I'm not a landscaper, and neither is he, but we did, we followed his instructions as well, as you can tell by our water bill. I, I don't know.
I, I guess I kinda agree with Bill, that Voss should've been called before Hertzberg was given an opportunity to make it right. He, Voss did haul in quite a bit of black dirt, is that correct?
He put in a layer of, and I don't know if that's, 'cause I said, what did he bring in here for dirt that would cause thistles to grow?
Well, and that's...
Because we never had any for, and that's why some, and then someone had told me, "Well, that can happen when you..."
We can find out.
Disturb.
Right, and when you bring in...
Dirt.
Field dirt.
Yeah, I, I don't know. Yeah, I have no idea.
Seed in there, you know?
Yeah.
That probably expla, explains the thistle, but Voss should've been given an opportunity to reseed.
We can find out on the work order too, what, where, or what type of dirt was brought in.
Can we?
And to get more concrete on that, instead of guessing.
Could we discuss this at one of the next working sessions, so that we have time to look into that?
Well, I think Voss is the ones we should go after to reimburse first.
Bob?
But if we don't know, don't know the particulars according to...
Bob knows.
He seeded a chunk over by the school, same day, he said it was the same tank full of water, was seeded in it. He said, "That's cool, I'm fine." So he just pretty much blew me out.
Neil, you guys talk about this at your next Public Works meeting? Get the information and come back with a recommendation?
Yeah, let's, let's put it on the agenda, with the city information that we have here, do we have, do we have any ongoing business with Vibrant, or there's any opportunity to talk with them about this?
No, they are rolling out...
They're working in town a lot right now.
They're, they're expanding in town, especially on those other, um...
They're all up in my neighborhood now.
Yeah.
'Cause I moved across town. So there's flags everywhere.
It might be worth a call to them. Somebody who's in charge.
I agree, they shouldn't have to conflict this bill, it wasn't their doing.
The guy who was in charge today that backed the machine up on the lawn, toward the grass, he said, "I contributed once, I'm not gonna do anything again."
Well, maybe that's because it's you who's more likely, the city contacts them, so we get further.
It might be worth us calling them to see what happened, but I agree that maybe we should bring it up at Public Works, and find the best way to move it ahead.
What is the next Public Works?
We'll be here some, that's all. The next Public Works meeting is Monday, December twelfth, at five o'clock.
And then council's gonna be meeting right after that, so we can put it on both, I would imagine.
You could.
Yeah.
So can we get back to you on the thirteenth?
You already paid for it, so it's just...
Right, yeah. I mean, there's two ways to do this, we don't expect, we don't necessarily need a check, but in reality, and I don't know that any of you have thought of this, but I have, I think him and I could get credit on our sewer water bill to cover this. So it's not like it's not possible for the city to do this. No. Correct?
When I say possible, it's just, you know, it's a weird situation, because the city didn't do anything bad, the city...
As we didn't either, right?
I know, I know, but it, this isn't really a problem that the city caused, so it's like...
Well, yes and no.
Well, let, let me back up a little further. This all started kind of when they put the street in from our place, our mailbox is roughly right in the center, so they finished to the north side of the mailboxes first, and they laid in one of these grass mats, come up beautiful annual rye grass, and then it never came back again, so Ron admitted that that should've been taken care of way better than what it was. The mat kept coming up and getting caught in the lawnmowers or whatever, so that's like the year before. So that's kind of why Ron said, "Well, we really need it, the city's gotta take part of the blame for it, because it wasn't done right in the first place." On the other side of the mailbox, they came in, they called, hydro seeded it, it came up beautiful. I would've been perfectly happy with that, until they come in with this machine to tore up the lawn, and they dug in the green toast dole things, left an area this, this big, it was nothing but rocks, we couldn't even roll it, which is...
I've got something to say when you're done.
Go ahead.
Okay, go ahead, okay. And your letter dated October sixth, you wrote in the conclusion, you feel you wrote three more water bill adjustments, you wanted to reimburse for the hose sprinklers and reimburse Hertzberg lawn care. And I agree with Bill's point around that one, is that it's kinda hard to point the finger at the city, when the city's really not the one at fault for it. It has to do with Vibrant and Oxtail, and I do believe that those would be the ones that you're probably gonna have a lot more success going towards, because you do need to give reimbursement, there's no doubt about it. And it's just a rotten situation.
Well, we went by the guidance of your city employee, Ron Mergan. He told us that the city would do no more, after that was over with, then that was the end of it, they wouldn't do anymore. And so that's why in the fall of twenty-twenty-one, we had to make a decision on our own to do something, we got, we can't leave this like this, and that's why we had to take it upon ourselves to do that. So granted, yeah, you're right, you know, okay, you did what you could do. Well, we went by what a city employee told us to do, and that the city would no longer help us with this project, which wasn't our project to start with, so...
You know, for instance, there's a lot of people right on County Road eighty-five here, where the county plows, and after it snows, the salt ends up in people's yards.
Yeah, I know, we get that too.
Yeah, so, um, it's kind of the, the same situation where, do the landowners have any, any ground on top of the county saying, "Hey, you repaired my lawn because of your salt?" You could sure try, I don't know, I don't know how far anyone's gonna get with it, but it's just, uh, one of those, again, rotten parts of doing business, living on, you know, in a spot where the first hand fee, whatever, the Boulevard is actually owned by the county or the city or whatever. So I'm not quite sure which direction to go, I'm not a lawyer.
Here's how I'm gonna move forward. I, I agree with, with Joan Doreen. I would be through the roof if this happened in my yard, so I get why you're here. I want this to go to Public Works on December thirteenth, and then it can come to council afterwards with a recommendation from the Public Works team. Between now and then, I'd like for Tarek and Ron to get on the phone with Vibrant and see who they can connect with, because I think this is Vibrant's responsibility. I look at this, and I don't mean this to some crass, I don't think this is the city's doing. This is, I get where you're coming from, but Vibrant's the one that caused this. They need to be the ones responsible for making it better. So I hope that, you know, if we can throw the weight of the city behind a couple of phone calls, maybe we can get there faster.
Can the city do something? Because I've never sued anybody in my life, and I think if we start going against Vibrant, it's kinda like David Blatt, I don't think we, if we wouldn't give no word, if we tried talking to them.
Small claims can be...
They will be put on notice, though.
Well, the guy, Luke Schenker from Meeker Co-op Vibrant broadband, he's the one that, he works for, for Vibrant, he's their representative. And Ryan Suez is from the Oxtail Fiber Splicing Company, they're the ones that brought the machines on the, on the lawn and, and wrecked the lawn, so, but Luke Schenker is the one, he was our contact at Meeker Co-op, so, but I think he went, he let his boss or, or the owner or whoever make the final call, and that's when he called Joe and said, "Well, take us to court," so...
Well, Doreen, I was just saying, you might be surprised how sympathetic a judge might be to a conciliation court. I mean, I think Meeker Co-op's gonna sound pretty rotten.
Yeah.
But maybe not, but, you know, that's...
An eighty-dollar filing fee and a thirty-dollar virtual court hearing, or thirty-minute virtual court hearing, I think, I agree with Bill, Meeker's gonna sound pretty, pretty rotten if they come in and say, "Well, yeah, there's the picture of our equipment on their yard doing the damage, but we're not responsible for fixing it."
Okay.
But I think, you know, if we can put the weight of the city behind it, and maybe get some momentum from them on making this better, we can try, we can certainly make a couple of phone calls, and then hopefully get back to you on, I can't remember if Monday's the thirteenth, or if Tuesday's the thirteenth, but...
Tuesday the thirteenth.
Tuesday's the thirteenth, so we'll get back to you sometime Tuesday or Wednesday of that week.
In December, right?
December.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
Okay, all right. And you, the Public Works will, will they get a copy of this letter, so they know what we went through?
Yeah.
It'll probably be good.
Put it in their agenda.
That probably would be...
They'll put it in their agenda.
Thank you, Jennifer, very much. All right, thank you guys very much.
Thank you.
Really appreciate your help.
Right, so we'll basically, we'll refer that one up to committee. Moving on to new business, B, snow plowing at the Green Roof Center on page sixteen. I don't know who wants to talk to us about this, I'd normally look at Ron, but...
Neil.
Neil.
I guess I'm kind of involved at the committee meeting that was brought up about snow plowing and I said, "Well, the city's got some plows and F four fifty or whatever it's on and maybe we look at plowing the lot this year and keep that in mind when we make the contribution to the, to the Green Roof." And we talked to Ron and he said, "Like normal snowfall under six inches, no problem getting it plowed by nine o'clock." Because that's kind of when they want their lot open because the seniors start showing up. And if it's a foot snowfall or heavy, chances are if the school is closed, the senior center's also closed. So when the heavier snowfalls probably not going to need to be plowed till the next morning if it's closed. If it's open, we have to do our best to try to get it plowed. But I guess that's what it's about, is saving the city and the senior center both a little money.
Bill, if we do that, are we picking up any liability for a slip and fall in that parking lot?
Well, I mean, I guess anything you do, there's some risk that somebody will try to blind you from the problem, but slip and falls and snow ice conditions in Minnesota aren't the best cases. I mean, you know, I mean, you know that, that, you know, people are kind of on notice if it's obviously snowed, that it's likely to be slippery and, you know, falls happen as I know, from your perspective. You know, so, yeah, I mean, there's a risk, but you, you do have good insurance. I, you don't necessarily take risks, but I don't think that's a big risk.
The senior center, of course, is insured.
I don't know, I don't know what happens. I, I don't know what Ron's saying, if we give a snow that's more than six inches and it's heavy, can we move it with a truck or, or do we, is it going to require bigger equipment to do it? I, I don't know.
Well, if it's a foot or more, they'd probably use the blower.
No.
But, but we'd have to wait until he's done with the downtown streets.
Gotcha.
Because that's what the blower...
That would be the priority. If I'm talking to the Public Works guys, they said they'll most likely just get loader, not the, not the one ton truck.
Then if the senior center is okay with that, don't wait downtown, I agree.
Well, like I said, if it's over a foot, it's probably going to be cool.
It'll be close.
And I mean, I don't, I don't know what's going to happen in terms of their ask and how much value they've placed on the snowplow. I don't know, that's a discussion, I guess, but, but that's something, you know, they've asked for help with it. If you're willing to do it, I guess that's, I don't, I don't think it's a huge risk if you're certain you insure.
I won't do it. I'd like to see the agreement, just to make sure that we know wherever, it doesn't have to be a formal contract, which is something where it's in writing that if it's over a certain threshold or whatever we're looking for, or, you know, that it's going to be the next day, just so that they're not calling Ron at nine fifteen in the morning going, "Why aren't you out here yet?" I don't know that they could do that.
Like, they certainly want to build in enough leeway so that it's not, like, like they don't have. I mean, you're doing it voluntarily, it's not, you're not being paid, so, I mean, I would think that the understanding could easily be that you're going to do it, you know, as quickly as you can, but other things that might take priority, if they do, you're going to get there when you can get there. And that, that has to be, I don't, I wouldn't care if that was just an email from somebody on city staff, but I think, you know, that's, that's got to be the arrangement. It can't be, they can't expect that they're going to take hurry if, if you've got more important things to do, the other stuff's going to get done first, that's got to be understood.
You think Public Works would be better off saying what they can and can't do and then bringing it back here and we can agree on it?
Well, I'd like an answer tonight because we got...
Because we got snow. I mean, we're going to get more snow.
So they, they kind of like an answer tonight.
I am going to ask for, if someone is willing to make a motion to approve this, commencing as soon as we can get something in writing, be it an email or something else, confirming that the city will do this so long as the community's, or the Green Roof Area Center understands that other city areas may take priority from time to time.
And you'll, you'll be dealing with Red Day and I'm sorry, I don't have her married name. It was hurting, but now, of course, it's changed. But Red Day is the director, I know, is, is semi-retired.
I was going to say, she's still there.
Yeah, yeah, but she's putting in less hours and redefined the job title.
I don't think Red Day changed her email, I think it's still Red Day.
Red Day, Red Day.
I, I agree with it and I think if somebody wants to make the motion that we can start as soon as we get something in writing, even if it's something informal, then we can just start working.
I'll make a motion to start snow plowing at the Green Roof Area Center, contingent upon a memorandum of understanding.
Okay. And that could be an informal memorandum?
Informal.
Can we try to have the email, whatever, done by noon tomorrow?
All right, we'll get right on.
Okay.
I'm sure she's ready to...
Okay, then I have a second from Sony. Tarek gave us a thumbs up that he's sending the email now. All those in favor indicate by saying aye. The opposed, none, that carries. All right, then onto page seventeen, canvassing our election results. We have a proposed resolution in here certifying those results and we can look through the various items on here, including all of the write-ins. They were interesting indeed. I'm very disappointed that we did not elect Princess Diana to fill my spot.
I'm disappointed we didn't elect chickens.
Don't eat your tongue, folks.
His head's off, you know? Don't stress me out, Tom.
Can I have a motion?
I'll have to off my dosage.
I have a motion to approve Resolution two thousand and twenty-two dash thirty-four, canvassing election and announcing the results of city mayor and city council.
I'll second.
Right, I have a motion by Sony, seconded by Brick. Any further discussion on that? Congratulations Paul and Neil, especially to Paul, those sixty-two votes are really going to come in.
You campaigned a little harder than me, had one sign up.
I did have a sign up on the third one. All right. All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Opposed, none, that carries. But that had me thinking, I had some questions about how elections went. Kristen, are you back there, are you able to come up here?
Some of the ratings stayed off their legs, we had to be a senior resident.
I know, I was thinking that too.
But usually, you don't want us to be resident now.
Donald Duck, Mickey Mouse, Princess, aye. No, so Kristen, I just, I brought you up here under a little bit of a ruse. I don't have questions about the election, but I do just want to say, I don't know that any of us realized just all of the work that you put into running the election, especially the fact that you did it post-COVID. You took a few days off because you had COVID in the middle of early voting and then came in to do the early voting, the voting on Saturday. The fact that you were here at six AM on Tuesday and that you didn't get home until after eleven. We, as a council, wouldn't be here but for the grace of the voters who put us in this position and they wouldn't have the voice to put us in this position if not for you and all of your clerks or all of your judges. So with that, I just asked Jennifer to print out a certificate that we've all signed for you. We just want to thank you so much for going above and beyond and doing all of the work that you have. We are very grateful that you and your fellow judges have done all that you do to help us out as a community, to give voice to the people who want to be heard in our elections. So, thank you, Kristen.
Thank you, guys.
You bet.
Jennifer told me it'd be too much to put her proposal resolution on. You're not wrong. All right, moving on then to old business on page thirty-three. We posted this tobacco ordinance for its ten-day notice and now we're looking for a motion to approve the modifications.
Motion to approve ordinance number thirty-nine, third series, amending tobacco administration penalties.
Second. Motion by Sony, seconded by Hertzberg. Any further discussion? And no, all in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye, aye, opposed, none. Okay, Tarek and Megan are blind and great.
All right, well, we received the approval on a grant that we submitted to the Blended Foundation. They will be giving us fifty thousand dollars to help construct the Ampe Park Shelter and they are eager to give us the money ASAP before Thanksgiving, they want to cut a check. So they sent us an agreement that we need to review and once we sign that agreement, they will issue us a check.
Awesome. Right, well, we could say, no, we asked for eighty, they said fifty.
Yeah, we did ask for eighty.
We'll take fifty.
All right. Well, with that, I'm going to call for a motion and I wonder, Megan, if you want to make that motion?
I do, but I just lost it, so...
Well, I need about a million grand and I'll have to sign my signature.
So I motion to accept the Blended Foundation grant and authorize the city administrator to sign the document.
Second. Motion by Brick, seconded by Hertzberg, as on the action sheet, to accept the grant and authorize signature. Any further discussion?
All those in favor indicate by saying aye. We're well on our way, projections is like three hundred and eighty thousand to do the shelter and we got a hundred and one thousand with this donation right now. And there's more in, in the works, DNR.
Yep, Chuck is working with us on the DNR, we should be, hopefully that's a fifty-fifty grant. We got declined last year, we're hoping that the second time around is better.
We're doing very well, so keep up the good work on that.
All right, following the question, all those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, none, that carries. All right, that concludes our business. Unforinformational, Stearns County Courthouse is hosting a centennial celebration tomorrow. To all of those who are still using three G data networks, shout out and leave your...
We're following up, get the...
I feel about this like good old Mum Ray that we talked about.
We have a board of appeal and equalization trained through the Department of Revenue, fishing peer assessment on page fifty along with the update on the North Gap, which means that it's a heck of a lot easier for me to go up to my parents and for Kristen to get home every night. And, and with that, we are adjourned. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.